Good evening, everyone. Tucksbury Zoning Board of Appeals for March 31st, 2022 is in session. First order of business is approval of the minutes. I think we should... Yeah, we can do the minutes. Let's do the minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes. Second?
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Our chairman is stuck in traffic. All right, first item on the agenda, C J M Builders on behalf of Cheryl Corson for a variance under Section 4130, Appendix B of the Tucksbury zoning bylaw for acreage, and a special permit under Section 3630 to demolish and build a new single-family home on a pre-existing non-conforming lot as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 41 Widdon Ave., Assessors Map 25, Lot 52, zoned residential. Come up here, please. If you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name's Chuck Mulick from C J M Builders.
So you're the builder, not the owner?
Correct.
All right. Tell us a little bit of what you're doing.
So what we'd like to do is, as you stated, take the existing dwelling down as well as the detached two-car garage that's also on the property. Right now, the existing home is actually built a little bit into the street. So with the new house, we will be conforming to all the setback requirements per the bylaws. And we would be putting a two-car garage with a side-loading driveway to access the garage. The house will be a Cape-style home with a breezeway, two-car garage with rooms above, approximately a little over 3,000 square foot home. And pretty much, that's it. We're looking for the variance for the lot size. And where it's non-conforming, we're looking for the special permit.
So you meet all your setbacks? You just don't meet the one acre?
Correct.
I see what you're saying. Your existing home is in the street.
It is. Good for Duncan to have a drive-through, but not outside.
Any questions, board members? No.
Have you had any neighbors complaining on what you're doing?
I haven't heard of any. So the owner now is a family friend, an owner forever. She's actually in the process of losing the home. And the way the house is right now, it's really not... It would have to be a full gut out and redone. And then still, you have the problem where it's in the street.
You're just building a typical Cape-style, nothing crazy?
Correct.
Yeah. I think we had some people sign them.
Being a public hearing, we'll open it to the public at this time. If anyone would like to speak, please come up to the podium. State your name and address.
Hi, my name is Keith Beas to Ward Street. And Ward Street, we're right on the corner of Ward and Whitehead Ave. So this property is like right next door. That's our property on the side. So some of the concerns that I had, I got the card in the mail. I tried to go to the website. I couldn't pull up any of the drawings or anything. But one of the concerns that I have is that it's not going to be... Is it going to be the same footprint as the one that's there now? You know? Is it going to be closer to my property?
I think I can answer the question. You need to direct all your questions to the board.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you look at the print, and I can show it to you.
Oh, that'd be great.
It's actually taking... It's not on the same footprint. It's moving it almost right in the middle of the lot to conform to get it off the street.
It's a much larger house.
It is a much larger house. It's going to be a two-and-a-half-story house. Typical, first floor, second floor, and then the attic is called a half.
Oh, okay. It's a much larger house than it's there now. So just so you understand, it's like something that's grayed out here? That's going to be the new driveway, or is that where the existing?
The dark gray. The dark gray is a proposed 20-foot-wide paved driveway.
Okay.
The red lines are the proposed house, garage, and deck. And underneath it, in the faded-out gray, is the existing. That's what's there now.
Okay, I see. So that's the garage that's there now. So it's going to come from the garage, it's going to come over closer to our property. My property's right here. So it's going to be coming over towards us more.
It will be closer. It's still 52 feet away from the property line.
Okay.
But it will be a little closer, yes.
Okay, well, so that's a decent amount. Yeah, I mean, the only concern we have is we want it too close. And the other concern we have is it's going to be real tall. And, you know, you lose all the privacy in the backyard, too.
Two-and-a-half stories isn't towering. Were you thinking taller than that?
No, I didn't know. It's like a ranch there now. You know, so it's... We have this fence in between the properties. And, you know, when you go on our backyard, you can't even see the house. So it's going to be up above the fence, you know? Are you planning on putting a new fence there?
Plan on new fencing?
I'll be honest with you, we haven't discussed fences or anything, but we're not close to the idea of putting up a fence, like, you know, maybe a white PVC fence, something like a maintenance-free fence.
Yeah, there's a wooden stockade.
Stockade fence.
Yeah, right, stockade fence there now. It's okay.
And that's the area they used to... Because he was a sign guy back in the day, so he used to have all the signs and stuff over there. That they cleaned all that out since.
Okay.
Over that area, yeah. I actually have the drawings of the house, too, if you wanted to see them.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, I mean, I'm not opposed to it. It's just that I don't want it too close to our property. It looks like it's going to be 50 feet back, 52 feet?
52 feet away from the property line.
From the property line, okay. And then if you could do something with a fence, that'd be great, because the window is kind of falling down, you know? And...
I would imagine if you built a nice new house, you wouldn't leave a...
Put a fence.
Falling-down fence.
Right.
Anything else, sir?
Nope, I think that'll do it.
Did he give you a copy of the principal?
Yeah, can I keep these?
You can keep them.
No, he doesn't have a copy of the principal. He has here.
You gave him one of the house, right?
Not of the house, no.
No. No.
Anything else, board members?
I don't think this thing.
Kind of like that the applicant is trying very hard to situate it on the property. I like that. Keeping the setbacks. Anything else?
That's it.
All right, somebody want to make a motion to... Are you okay? Are you...
I mean, I know I've got a little big house, I see, but I don't... It's not too big, you know?
Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to say before I close the hearing?
No, no, just that I, you know... Just a fence would be great, I think.
I would be pretty confident that a new fence would be going up. Now, if somebody would like to make a motion to close the whole closing hearing.
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? So I'm sure the applicant, now that we've said it four times, if approved, would be more than willing to put a fence up for their neighbor. Instead of a beat-up old fence that's there, to put a shiny new house up.
As stated.
Probably going to put up a new fence. All right, if somebody would like to make a motion, we have to do the special permit.
Right, first, yeah.
So it'll be two motions.
I'll move that we allow C N M J Builders on behalf of Cheryl Corson a special permit under Section 3630 to demolish and build a new single-family home on a pre-existing non-conforming lot as shown by this board filed with the board at 41 Whitehead Ave., Assessors Map, Lot 52, zoned residential.
Motion's been made.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's unanimous vote.
Right. And the variance. We allow C N M J Builders on behalf of Cheryl Corson for a variance under Section 4130, Appendix B of the Tucksbury zoning bylaw.
Motion's been made.
Second?
And seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Did you close out the special permit?
I heard the door. I was going to open it, it was coming up.
Is that put the building? Then you stand up to the top, yeah.
Really? Because I don't know. How... Yes, I was trying to have a construction. Yes, that's it. Yeah, it's a... The new people...
Thank you. John Richell?
Yep.
What did I do? Pretty good. And Stephanie Borges, Carol Plunkett and Plunkett, under Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 8, party agreed by a decision made by the building inspector in a letter dated February 8th, 2022, to construct a metal storage shed. Said property is located at 30 Outer Street, Assessors Map 103, Lot 4, zoned residential. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, David Plunkett, representing the applicants, John Richel, is that correct? Yes. Okay, good. And Stephanie Borges, two in a row. Members of the board, this is, I think, a fairly straightforward issue that we're bringing before you tonight. The applicants have lived at this property for approximately seven years. They then just recently bought it. They had rented it for a number of years. They bought the property. One of the things in preparing for purchase was that they, as always envisioned in wanting to have a shed. And, you know, there's intent to use it for workout space, hobby shop, storage of certain items. And the proposed structure is a functional building. It's a functional building. It's included the copy of the plans there of what they're intending to put there. It's a metal structure, but it's a functional building. Building Commissioner, in denying the application, made reference to the provision of the bylaws, which I attached as an exhibit to my narrative letter, that references what is not deemed a permissible accessory structure. And Section 3523 has three subsections, which refer to truck box, Kornex box, and a steel storage unit. So clearly, it's all, you know, they're describing three of the same type of things, a storage unit. The town doesn't want you to have, you know, Kornex box. They don't want you to have this big metal structure on the back of your property. They just store things in. And it's, I think, probably more focused on commercial areas. But that's the intent. I think it's interesting to note that in the new bylaws that are being promulgated and are going to be voted upon on the annual town meeting, you know, incorporates the same terminology of Section 3523, but they don't do it as subsections. They just say that, you know, it would be an unacceptable, you know, accessory building to have either, you know, to have a Kornex unit, a truck box, or a steel storage unit.
So what do you think? They're calling a steel storage unit? Because I just looked at the definitions and it's not there. Do you think they're all the same? You think a Kornex box, a Drago box, a steel storage unit are all the ground-level storage containers?
Yeah, that's what the intent of the bylaws is. And again, if you look at the, you know, what was submitted in terms of the proposal, it's a building. It's a building. It has doors and entryways in and to it. It has an area that's going to give space for, you know, again, the workout space, the hobby area, storage of certain materials. And in town, there are a number of steel structures. Just off of Marshall Street, there's recently been, you know, the construction of a steel unit, building, that's same type of idea. It was for, you know, potential garage tinkering around with, you know, vehicles and things of that sort. So, you know, at some point, common sense comes into play. And, you know, if you even look at smaller proposals of, you know, that are all over the town, you have a number of people that have sheds in back of their houses that are steel sheds. It's not a Kornex box, it's not a truck box, and it's not a steel storage unit. And it says steel storage unit. It doesn't say a steel building. It doesn't say a steel structure. It says a steel storage unit in conjunction with the Kornex box and the truck box. So, you know, again, you have to give, you know, common interpretation of language so that it makes sense. And you also would look at, you know, throughout the town, you know, what you may have in town. Look at, you know, what's on sale down at Home Depot. You have some wooden structures that are sheds. You also have some steel structures that are sheds. So what are we going to do? Go around every house that has a shed and determine, oh, what's the, you know, what's this structure made of? Oh, it's steel, you can't have that. Again, you have to give reasonable interpretation to language, especially in the situation where the term is used and the bylaw is not defined in the bylaw. So a steel storage unit in conjunction with a Kornex box and a truck box is not a building. It's not a functional building, which is what they intend to do here. The property, you know, is buttoned the skate, speed skate area that, you know, used to be the North Meadow Country Club. So on the one side of it, you have, you know, commercial, commercial use. Stephanie had gone into the neighborhood and has a number of neighbors who have supported the effort to do this, so there's no opposition. Do you have that?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was... Didn't have a chance that a lot of people weren't home.
Yeah.
So, but we have one, two, three, four, five, six signatures on, if I could submit this for... So we don't have a situation where someone's trying to do something that neighborhood is in opposition, and it's in keeping with what's allowed in a number of other instances through the town. And more, most importantly, the language doesn't prohibit this type of structure from going in.
And I didn't have time to go to every house that's on that list and some were not home, so that's fine.
So I'm looking through the pictures of what you submitted. So you're going 25 by 50?
So on...
Which is... Which one?
That would be, this is the...
Yes, yep.
So if you look at the exhibit with the photos, that would be...
Both ends will have.
That would be the first unit from the right on the top, on the top row.
Point to it. I can see where you are. You don't have to get up. Okay. So that's the one with the door on the side?
Yes.
On the ass, yeah. Both ends will have a door.
Both ends. Do you have any more pictures of that particular one?
No.
There's a similar one on that, but there won't be a window that's showing on that one.
The one beside it.
It's basically the same front view here. No back view, no side view, no nothing?
Not with me, I don't have. Oh, the whole thing? That's going to be the same. Similar.
Well, you're asking me to make a determination on what it is.
Similar.
And you didn't give me any pictures of it.
Well, no, we gave you...
You gave me a picture of the front.
Pardon me?
You gave me a picture of the front.
And the back is going to be the same thing.
So I got the front and the back. Middle, sides, insides, nothing?
Well, you have the layout of the unit.
And I have this?
No, this was part of the exhibit also.
The plans. Yeah.
The height?
16.
Is it in the middle?
16 is the highest point.
So 25 wide, 50 long.
Correct.
And 16 at the high point tall. And you're looking for a permit to call this an accessory structure? And what are you going to use it for?
It would be storage.
Does it have heat?
No. Yes, for me? Oh.
The other's building.
I would like to have heat in it if I can.
Plumbing?
If I could. I mean, down the road would be nice, but...
But the intent isn't to have plumbing in this?
Not right now, whatever's legal.
I'm looking at 3511, Attorney Plunkett. accessory building shall not be more than one and a half stories, which you're not.
Right.
It shall not be habitable.
Correct.
You put heat and water in there, they're habitable.
It's not habitable. Well, first off, the indication was plumbing if it was leading. And that, that's not the intent now.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, there's no intent to put a bedroom in there. There's no intent to put a bathroom in there.
You were going to make it a workout room or something, is what you said when you first came in?
Yeah. Workout room, woodworking, storage materials, a typical shed.
Typical shed has a lawnmower in it. That's a typical shed. It's big, 25 by 50. That's not a typical shed. It's bigger than a house.
Yeah. But it's not out of character with other type structures that have been built in the town, and some of them are very recent vintage. And Section 3510, the only limitations is on height and, you know, in terms of not to be used, 20 feet in height, no more than one and a half stories, and shall not be habitable. So this is not in excess of 20 feet in height. It's not more than one and a half stories, and it will not be habitable. There is no intent, nor is there any indication that it would be viable for putting anything in to make it habitable. And if there was an attempt to do so, obviously, they'd have to get permits for it. And it wouldn't be allowed because unless they went through... It just wouldn't be allowed, I mean. That that's not what the request for the permit, the building permit is for.
Any question, board members?
To the left of the structure, proposed structure, is that 25 feet to the lot line? Is that what that's measured there?
A little bit more, but yes, yep.
And that neighbor to the left, is that...
To the right. The neighbors to the right, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no. To the left of the building, like, looking straight in, who's the neighbor to the left? Is that North Meadow?
Ice Rank, yes, North Meadows, yeah.
Yeah, but is that like their driveway right there? Is that more or less?
Yeah. Park and lot, yeah.
Park and lot, yeah, yeah. And then the setback saying 100 feet from the end of the building to the property line, the end line?
Did you submit a plot plan for the permit?
We did, right? Yes.
That was part of the submission.
Yeah, conservation came out there and measured everything, and then we got to this.
I saw it, I went by it.
Now, will this be built on a slab?
Yes.
I actually have a quick question. On the permit, under description proposed, you called it a construction of a hobby shed as opposed to an accessory structure? Wouldn't it... They're two different semantics.
Well, I think it was, the intent is to show that, you know, this is something to differentiate it from the question of a steel storage unit. So it's workout area, woodwork and storage of materials. It's a functional building. I think that's the key here. It's a functional building. You have entryways to the front and the back on both ends of it.
Opposed to being a shed?
Well, the issue is, it's not that it was denied because it's a shed. It was denied because the, it's steel component in the structure, in the construction, and the reference by the building commissioner was to the steel storage unit reference in the bylaw, which was in conjunction with the Kornex box and truck box. So they have three, three references to what are all...
That one didn't come in as an accessory?
Oh, it is a, yeah, it's an accessory.
That, that one, the one on Marshall Street that you're referring to. What I'm stuck on, I'll be honest with you, is it was denied as an accessory building, right? Saying it's a steel storage unit.
Yep.
And in our definitions, and I went back to my old book, that's why I pulled this one out, it does not define a steel storage unit. That's what I'm having a hard time with.
And it, it defi, it references a steel storage unit together with Kornex box and a truck box.
Well, they don't do it together. They do it differently. Like, a truck box and a Kornex box are two different things.
No. But it's the same, similar thing. It's a storage.
So, what's your take on a steel storage unit?
It's a ster, a storage.
Describe a steel storage unit to me.
I would say a storage unit would be something that's a unit that has no functional utility other than to put things in to store. And it's usually just a, you know, you're putting in it, you have maybe an opening to throw things in, and that's it.
How would you just, how would you describe a Kornex box to me then?
Same type of thing. It's a steel structure in which there has no utility or function as a building other than you put things in it for purposes of storing or most, a lot of the, you know, the, the more typical, uh, use of a Kornex box is with, on the ships transporting things. You put them in it, you transport them, you take them out, and that, that's a storage unit. That's a metal storage unit.
I use, I use Kornex boxes every day.
Yeah.
I know exactly what a Kornex box is.
Yeah.
I know what a truck box is. Steel storage unit. If they're listing it other than a Kornex box and a truck box, I'd like to see a definition of it. Because you, you kind of are putting up a steel storage unit.
I, I would say no. You're putting up a steel building.
You called it a shed.
Well, I mean, we, we called it a hobby shop. We were trying to give a sense of what it's going to be utilized as. And if you look at the, uh, the layout of the building, you have a, you know, there's going to be a cement slab that you, that's going to be the floor of it. A Kornex box does not have a cement floor.
It's more like, it's more like a garage.
What would it be called if it was wood? What would it be called if it was wood?
Yeah. You know, the, you can put a facier on it that's different, I suppose. Uh, but, you know, as I say, there's a big difference between a storage unit and a, you know, again, I, you know, a functional building. You, you see that you have entryways on front and back, a door, and a larger garage-type door, both the front and back of the building. You have a slab that's going to be the floor. You know, that's not a steel storage.
It, it's a giant garage. I, I get it. It's made out of steel.
Yeah.
Right? They're quick and easy. Pour a slab, up they go. I, I get it.
Yeah.
I just, I don't want to do the wrong thing, because then we'll have a parade of hobby shops coming in.
I just have a question. When, when you went to the neighbors, you canvassed them, did you, was this the copy of the permit you showed them? Did you show them a copy of the building, or?
Uh, they got the letter in the mail. So, we were told if we got, if we talked to the neighbors, it could help. So, yesterday, we went to, uh, every neighbor that was there, whatever was home. Um, they told us they got the letter in the mail, and they looked at...
I, and I gave, I gave them that.
That?
That printout, yeah.
Oh, yeah. The, where the house is, yeah.
Showing the, showing the commercial buildings on the side and where our property is and where the shed will be.
So, everybody's aware of the size of the unit that's going in there?
Yeah.
Yes.
That was notified.
Yeah.
Now, you were denied because it was a metal structure or a metal building?
For that reason, yeah. Everything else passed, but...
I have a bunch of emails going back and forth with him, and he was, he was, he was, I think he was more concerned about the size, and he kept calling it a military Kornex hut. Um, and then he was going to allow it and then not allow it. And then after going back and forth, he just denied it and put that, that reason in.
What do they call them? What is the name for them?
Oh, it's a X, the, the, the building? They call it, um...
One's a hut.
They call it an X-style hut. I mean, not hut. I don't, I don't know the exact name. It was an X. It was the Model X. I know that.
That's a hut, yeah.
Model X model.
And I get it. It's a, it's a steel building.
Yeah.
I get it. It's a giant garage. We don't really have anything in here calling out a giant steel garage. It's definitely not a Kornex box. It's not a truck box.
And I feel like where we live, right next to Green Meadows, and there's a trucking school and, you know...
Right, but living next to it doesn't make you commercial.
I know.
Right, I know. It just makes it easier on the eyes, I guess.
Right.
Versus...
When you submitted for your permit, you didn't give the building commissioner that, right? You gave them a certified plot plan of where this was going?
Yes.
Because the plan you gave us shows your property...
Did we give them both?
And these, these numbers don't jive with these numbers?
I, we gave them both. This, we gave them both. That I, he wanted a physical thing drawn, so I drew that for him.
He didn't ask for a certified plot plan?
We gave them both, right?
Yeah, I gave him the one on the left hand, yeah. And I gave him the drawing. But that is the plot plan, yes.
I understand that. But he accepted that?
Yes.
Wow. I'm a little surprised, only because, you know, you, you drew it out, and you told me where it was. You said this side of the property is 250 feet, and this calls it out as 298 feet. And I'm assuming this was 250, and it's 298. And then you're showing me 50 feet off the back, but if you're 40 feet short to begin with, then is that right? Is that where it's going to be?
Yes.
Follow what I'm saying? You got 298 on your certified plot plan, and then on your drawing, you got 250.
I don't know which order I drew that. I just did it off my tape measure and...
Right, but that's why, that's why you have certified plot, certified plot plans.
Yep.
And that tells me exactly where it's going.
But, but certainly, it indicates that the...
That wasn't the reason.
Length of the sideline is sufficient to place it in the proximity of the, uh, of the drawing, which is showing it 70 feet off of the back porch area. And the fact that, you know, he actually has more...
Where is the shed and the deck?
The shed's gone.
The shed is gone?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. And the deck is gone?
Uh, the deck was never a deck. It was something I put my grills on. So, it's, I, it's actually, they're both moved, they're both gone.
So, it's patio?
It's a what?
It was a patio.
It was this, I don't know what you call it. I built a wooden frame to put my grill on.
Patio.
And they made it permanent when the guy came.
So, the shed and deck are gone?
Yes.
Is this an existing nonconforming for frontage?
It's not 150 feet, so, uh, I would say that probably is.
So, you're an existing nonconforming?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's less than a nay.
Are you going to look for a special permit, or no? As an accessory structure, you won't need it?
There was no reference of a need to have a special permit.
Okay.
Uh, the only reference was the dec, uh, declined because of, uh, the provision in the bylaw referring to a steel storage unit.
Okay. Anything else, board members?
No.
Anything else right now?
That's it.
Make a motion to close both parts?
Make, some move.
Motion is made in second and all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any discussion?
No, no, I don't have anything.
No. All right. So, the motion is going to be for a party agreed. So, we always make the motion in favor. So, if we make a motion in favor, we're saying we agree with the building commissioner. So, if we vote yes, then you agree with the building commissioner. If we vote no, then we agree with the applicant. Would you agree with that?
But the protocol is, yes, that, you know, the end result would be, that's the protocol of the board. You know, a, a favorable outcome to the applicant would be a negative vote, then we understand that's a protocol.
Okay. As long as, as long as we all understand that.
Yeah.
So, we always make a motion in favor. So, if somebody would like to make a motion?
Let me do it. I made a motion in favor of John Rickdell and Stephen Vorges from Plunkett and Plunkett under the General Laws, 40A, Section 8, is a party agreed by a decision made by the building inspector in a letter dated February 8, 2022, constructive metal storage shed on said property located at 30 Carter Ave, Sesas Map 103, Lot 4, Zone...
Motion has been made. Need a second?
Second.
All right. So, now, if we vote in favor, if you vote aye, you're agreeing with the building commissioner. The applicant basically loses. If you vote nay, the applicant wins. Okay? Motion has been made in second, all in favor, seeing none, opposed, nay.
Nay.
So, you have a unanimous nay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
I wouldn't have been able to do that one.
Any old business?
No.
None.
Any new business?
None.
Anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Motion has been made.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.